Good evening, everyone. It being 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 31st, 2022, we will begin our annual town meeting this evening. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, on the heels of Memorial Day, may we honor all those who served in our military, at home and abroad, and for their families. And as we move into National Gun Violence Awareness Month, may we remember the far too many victims of gun violence across the country and their families. Thank you. Clerk Camino, can we begin with a roll call, please? Counselor Berica?
Here.
Counselor Flaherty?
Here.
Counselor Hume?
Here.
Counselor Mackin?
Here.
Counselor Maglio?
Here.
Counselor O'Brien is not attending this evening? Counselor Reynolds?
Here.
Counselor Ringus?
Here.
Counselor Ryan?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we'll be moving on to our announcements. I'd like to thank Mayor Kokoros and retired Marine Heidi Hurley for hosting a very moving, on a perfect day, Memorial Day celebration on Sunday. For those who were unable to attend, you can watch the ceremony on B-CAM, B-CAM's YouTube channel. Highly recommended. And thank you again, Mayor Kokoros, for hosting that event. This coming Saturday is the BHS graduation, June 4th, at 10:00 AM. So congratulations to all of our high school seniors who made it to this important milestone. And we are looking forward to celebrating with you on Saturday morning. And do any other counselors have announcements this evening? Counselor Maglio?
Thank you, Counselor Boraki. I would just like to remind people that on Sunday, June 5th, the mayor has, is hosting a flag raising for Day Pride to recognize and celebrate visibility and representation for all of the LGBTQ+ members of our community. So come on over to Town Hall at 1:00 on Sunday, June 5th, right out in front.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors have announcements? All right, seeing none? Yes, go right ahead, Counselor Reynolds.
I just want to congratulate the planning department and Mayor Kokoros' office for a great master plan steering committee open house held here on the 21st of May. There was a really great turnout. And it was very encouraging to see the number of Braintree residents who expressed their opinions and their concerns. It was a very well-organized event and very well-attended, and it's very encouraging. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reynolds. All right, moving on to approval of minutes. We have no minutes to approve this evening. And before we jump into our first item of business, I want to make sure I recognize and thank Mayor Kokoros and his chief of staff for being here with us, all of the department heads who are in attendance, as well as our town auditors, Sean McGoldrick and Catherine Pomeroy. I know we have members of our school committee here this evening, Chairwoman Heager, members Tuffy, Coblemir, and Lynch. And if I missed anyone, I apologize, but thank you so much for joining us this evening. And as set forth in our town charter, tonight is the annual town meeting to hold a public hearing on the town budget. We have three separate public hearings tonight on three separate budget motions. They're all going to follow the same format. So we will take a vote to open the public hearing. Then we will hear from the mayor's office, our town auditor, the counselors, and any members of the public wishing to speak. Then we will vote to close the public hearing. And then finally, we will vote on the motions before us. And I also want to take a moment to thank the Ways and Means Committee, Chairman Reynolds, Vice Chair Flaherty, and Member Maglio, the work they've done over the last month. It's been thorough. It's been thoughtful. It's truly in the best interest of the residents. So thank you for serving both the council and our community through all of the work you did over the last month. It is, it is a heavy lift and a ton of work. And on behalf of the residents, thank you. And in that vein, I also want to take a moment to thank all of our employees who work for the town, serving the residents every single day, 24/7, police, fire, DPW crews. I think I saw Chris Griffin here from Parks. I'm pretty sure you work seven days a week, Chris. So, you know, when it, when it comes to running the town, we spend most of our money on our people. And you are worth it. So thank you for all you do for all of us as residents of this community. And with that, I would like to move on to old business, 22025, Mayor, FY 2023, operating budget or take up any action relative thereto. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Don't move.
Thank you, counselors Ryan and Hume. I actually forget how to do this. All those in favor. All those, thank you. We have usually your roll call button. All those in favor. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you for indulging me. And with that, I'm going to refer to our chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, Counselor Reynolds, for your recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. At first, I'd just like to address the effort. So this review of the submitted fiscal year 2023 proposed operating budget before the full council for a vote here this evening has been an arduous process for the council's committee on ways and means. The town of Braintree continues to face a very difficult economic path forward. And as a result, the responsibilities of the council's financial oversight were a challenging task. As the chair of the Ways and Means Committee, I would like to express my sincerest thanks to my fellow committee members, Counselor Julia Flaherty and Counselor Elizabeth Maglio, for the tremendous time and the effort that they put into studying and understanding the mayor's proposed fiscal 2023 operating budget. With the after effects of COVID-19, Braintree has been challenged, like many of the other Massachusetts communities, to maintain the correct funding priorities that have made our community so special. But these challenges are not over, nor do they look like we'll be in a stronger funding position come this time next year. For a number of years now, Braintree has not been able to generate the amount of funding required to keep up with the escalating operating and personnel costs in a manner that has allowed us to adequately fund all of our spending priorities. This is the greatest challenge of our town's leadership. With a firm understanding that how we spend what limited funds we have, we on the Ways and Means Committee attempted to question and seek assurances that we are proceeding forward with a commitment to our most important spending priorities. Every dollar in this budget is sorely needed. And I can say confidently that there was no room to make any cuts to the mayor's proposed spending. However, it is my firm belief that we are, as a town, have not placed a high enough priority on our school funding. For the second year in a row, in my personal opinion, we have underfunded the most important piece of our annual budget. This year's school budget decisions, as stated by the school superintendent, James Lee, at an earlier hearing, clearly point out that by only increasing spending by 0.9% over last year's totals, the town has decided, by effect, to create a $6 million deficit to start the fiscal '24 budget planning. This is a solid number based on the use of one-time funding to fill gaps on the school budget of fiscal 2022 and now in fiscal 2023. This is a problem that can be avoided by adding more money in this year's budget in order to lessen the significant lift it will take to not cut the school budget further in fiscal 2024. Our children's future and the potential to receive the level of education and care is going to be jeopardized. We need to ensure that we are investing responsibly in their future. The town's stabilization funds are near zero. Currently, our free cash balance is dangerously low, which after tonight's vote for supplemental number one will leave us with $3.713 million in free cash balance. That represents only a 2.4% of our operating budget. Times are tough, and it is what it is. I'm not painting a bleak picture for effect. I'm pointing out the reality of our times. With this economic reality staring us in the face, I am doubly committed to doing my part as a member of this council to contribute whatever value this council can bring to bear on those enormous challenges we, the residents of Braintree, have before us. And so, Madam President, I'd like to report to the council that the committee on Ways and Means, understanding what the situations are and by the charter of our account, of our responsibilities as a council and oversight for finances, that we have voted unanimously in favor of recommending approval.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reynolds. I'd like now to invite the mayor or anyone from his staff to speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President, Town Council. And I want to thank the Ways and Means for their hard work and due diligence in reviewing the budget. And I appreciate their vote of confidence that we have put together the best budget we can within the confines of our finances. I'd also like to thank the school committee, members Lisa Heager, our chairperson, Kelly Coblemir, Matt Lynch, Kathy Tuffy, who are here tonight. Also want to recognize my department heads. You know, they're the ones that really do so much work throughout the year to make sure that our town is operating the best that it can. And with us tonight, we have DPW Director James Ossenol, Director of Elder Affairs, Shamila Iswa, Police Chief Mark DeBois, our Superintendent of Schools, Jim Lee, Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspection, and COVID, Mary Beth McGrath, Fire Chief Jim O'Brien, Director of Planning Committee Development, Melissa Santucci-Razi, Contract Administrator Grant Ryder, Lorraine C., Director of Human Resources, Karen Shanley, as well as Kathy Holquest, Director of Finance, The Man, Ed Spelman, as well as their public library director, Terry Stannell, and my Chief of Staff and Director of Operations, Nicole Tob. Also, I want to note, even though he's not in my department, Jim Casey, who's always been an ally and worked so hard throughout the budgetary process and helped us out. And I want to, you know, thank my staff members, Steve Larry, Kate Naughton, for what they do every day to take care of our residents. I'd just say that, you know, the budget has obviously been challenging because of COVID, and we have stepped up to that challenge, utilized any resources that we have to take care of that. I just want to recognize, take a moment, and recognize a few folks that are leaving us, retiring. One who's left, Ed Cronin, who spent many years as our business manager at the, at the school department, did a wonderful job. And he's going to be sorely missed. Also, Kathy Holquest, who's retiring, our benefits coordinator. And last but not least, our HR Director, Karen Shanley. Karen Shanley has done an amazing job in the time that she's been here in Braintree. And, you know, back in the days when I was a counselor, I worked with her on different issues. And she's always been there to help with, with anything employee-related. And she has a very kind heart and works very hard. And she will be dearly missed. And I think it'd be appropriate to just give her a round of applause. Thank you, folks. So before you, you have the fiscal '23 budget, balanced fiscal '23 budget, and the revised total of $152,108,824, which comes to a 4.46% increase. We, as you know, continue to make conservative projections on our revenue sources. We have seen the ability for us to get some additional grant funding. So we are fully utilizing the $7 million over two years of our county money in addition to state money that we're getting and our federal grant money that we have utilized in the last two years. If you see, our local meals and hotel motel taxes are coming back. We are close to pre-pandemic numbers. We still continue to budget those numbers conservatively because we want to make sure that we stay in line with our revenues as they come in. And I must say, you know, it's been, obviously with COVID, it was a challenge in so many ways in the schools. You know, we had two cohorts at one time. We had school closed at one time completely. We had spikes. We had our nurses doing testing, helping us with contact tracing, the school nurses, the health nurses, department health nurses. And I must say, it was, it was a great challenge. And, you know, I think that as Superintendent Lee and the staff put together this budget this year, they did an amazing job to make sure that we maintain staffing levels that would give us very low class sizes. The class sizes are the difference maker, really, in helping kids get back, get back on track and really giving them the extra attention they need post-COVID. So in addition to that, as you know, we have basically two new schools, one that came on in 2020, East Middle School. And then we have South, which will be coming online in the fall of '23, which is an exceptional accomplishment, started by Mayor Sullivan and continued by myself. And I think that it's so important for us to have these new buildings. And in addition to that, you know, we have had, our teachers have been so committed to our students and really done an exceptional job at helping them through this pandemic and beyond. If you look at Braintree Public Schools and all the, all the young men and women that entered into the National Honor Society and the Spanish and French National Honor Society, the numbers are extraordinary. We, we provide such a great education and continue to do so for our students. And, you know, I thank the school committee for their hard work in maintaining the budget, in maintaining mental health specialists and a number of other assistance that our students need. So when you look at the school budget, you will see that the class sizes are probably the lowest we've seen since the '90s, which really will help us carry on through the next year to two years. We've also been able to fund OPEB, which we had to take a pause on for over $377,000. And another issue that we were working each year to do was to bring our police and fire overtime funding up to a number that really indicated what the amount needed to be. And if you look at our fire and police overtime numbers, we have increased them both. And we are close, if not at, what our numbers should be. Obviously, this year, you'll see later, we talked about the sup, that we had some extraordinary situations. And the money is really insignificant compared to the fact that we could have lost the lives of our officers. So it was a lot of money. But for us, it was very important that we were, that we were able to have those officers survive that incident. So as far as the funding goes, we are at a point where, in normal circumstances, we should be close to what our overtime numbers were. The goal is to not come back for supplements on overtime. Obviously, we know that fuel costs have risen. We know that our snow and ice removal has been up the last couple of years. And we know that we are finishing our contract at the end of this fiscal year. So those three items have been addressed within this budget. And we also have restored our rec. department items to pre-pandemic levels. So with that, I stand before you, and I ask for your full support as the Committee on Ways and Means has for this fiscal 2023 budget. I think that we have utilized these one- and two-time funding sources that have been given to our community and many other communities because of the effects of COVID and the economic issues related to it. But I have full confidence that the work that my department heads and all of our employees have put in, will continue to put in, will bring new growth that we have been working on. And, you know, our life science is one piece. Motel 6 is being redeveloped. We'll have news on that once we get the actual application. And we just have so many great things happening coming out of this very dark time. And I just want to thank all of you for the time that you spend and you commit to analyzing the budget and making sure that we're doing our job. And I ask for your approval on the $152,108,824. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, I'd now like to invite our town auditors, Sean McGoldrick and Catherine Pomeroy, to offer their remarks on the budget. Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And also, I just want to say a thank you to all the members of Ways and Means. A lot of hard work goes into this budget review, a lot of long nights, and a lot of great questions. So I just think it's important to kind of reiterate something that I wrote in kind of my highlights and analysis, something similar to what I wrote last year as well, too. And that basically, the town is accustomed to increasing their appropriations by, let's say, X%. And that gap to fund those appropriations at X% is simply not growing as fast from the revenue side of things. So when the ability to tax is maxed out, reserves are shrinking, and your local receipts budgeting is close to actuals, there's no other wiggle room but to use the one-time free cash, one-time revenue sources. So without continued one-time revenue sources as grant funding, sale of town-owned land, et cetera, the pace simply cannot continue. In order to have the services you want and without making cuts, we have to find new revenue sources. We've already seen this start to change back in fiscal year '21, '22, and '23, when department heads were asked to cut 4%, 10%, respectively, off their budget after contractual increases. For fiscal year '23, about $3.7 million of non-recurring revenue and $2.1 million of non-recurring funds were used to help balance the budget. That's $5.9 million. Those funding sources ranged anywhere from ARPA funds to one-time local receipts, such as the sale of land, circuit breaker supplementals, and also ESER funding. So unless the town is willing to cut services or think differently about how they provide services, commercial property, or, I'm sorry, growing revenue long-term is the only option. Now, whether that means increasing housing, increasing your commercial tax base, raising existing fees, creating new revenue streams, or more than likely a combination of all those things, that is how the town will get through this hump that we're currently in. I know back in the spring, I'm sorry, in the fall, back last September, the former Ways and Means Committee, which some of you still exist, actually, I think it says Julia, asked for a long-term budget projection for the next 10 years, which I did so. And certainly, there were gaps. I myself could not take into account one-time funding without knowing what would be available at that point in time. The only thing we knew at that time is that ARPA would exist, and we could use to help balance the budget for '22 and '23. As the mayor alluded to, there will be some funding from the county available for use for either '23 or '24. But just like all grants, they go away. So once those go away, there's another time, another one-time funding source that is no longer available. So although I'm trying not to paint a bleak picture, I'm a realist and simply have to go based on what the numbers tell me. So Prop 2.5, in my opinion, will not get you there in terms of what this town wants to do in terms of services and in terms of appropriations. 70% of your budget comes from the tax levy. And if that only grows at a guaranteed 2.5%, the rest of it will simply not get you there. State aid, other local receipts are not outpacing your spending. It's actually going the opposite way. So if there's any questions, I'm certainly more than willing to take them. But thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGoldrick. And that's a good segue. So with that, I'll open it up to my colleagues on the council for anybody who would wish to speak on this. Counselor Ryan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, I want to congratulate Mayor Kokoros for presenting this budget in this very difficult fiscal times that we are living in right now. I think we all can tell that we're not, it's not the budget we hope we had, but it's the budget that we have. And it's a very well-thought-out budget that prioritizes what's important for the town of Braintree. And as I look out at all the folks here in the audience tonight, I think how lucky we are in the town of Braintree that we have so many people that work full-time for the town and work, volunteer on the different boards for the town. We're very lucky. At my job, I think we have 75 vacant positions right now. We're really struggling to find qualified people. And I look at all the very well-qualified, dedicated employees and volunteers we have in the town of Braintree, and that's what makes the town great. So I think this budget, we wish we had more revenues. Of course, we do. But we've rarely made the priorities, the right ones, in the budget. And I'm going to fully support this budget. And I think as a counselor, we need to look at anything that makes sense to increase revenue in the town. And I think we're going to be talking about some of these things coming up in the very near future. And if it makes sense for the town of Braintree, we need to really consider where we can get new revenue streams. So I think people should think about that on a night like tonight when we're approving this budget. But I want to thank Mayor Kokoros and his staff for a well-thought-out budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Any other counselors wish to speak? Counselor Flaherty?
So I look back at my calendar for the month of May, and I think the Ways and Means Committee logged more than 20 hours of meetings to review this budget. We scoured every column. We asked all kinds of big-picture questions. And we also dug really deep into the details. So I want to thank every member of every department who patiently answered question after question with their characteristic precision and thoroughness. Our department heads are second to none. They really, really, really know what they're about. So here's what I can tell you. Braintree is coming to a critical point in our fiscal health because our costs are growing at a rate that is outpacing our revenue. This is a trend that's been going on quietly for a number of years now. And we haven't felt the full brunt of the impact yet because we have the advantage of a few reserves in some of our bigger budget departments, as well as a reasonably healthy free cash supply. And then, in the wake of COVID, we've seen a series of one-time cash infusions from the federal government, and we've burned through that as well. So we're coming to the end of it. This year, we are using $2.2 million of one-time money in our education budget that will not be there next year. I cannot overemphasize how important that $2.2 million is. If we do not raise enough revenue this year to close that gap, that will mean substantial cuts to our school system, which already saw cuts last- which already saw cuts last year, which are not filled in the budget this year. $2.2 million means cutting many teachers. It means rising class sizes and diminished resources. Art and music will be vulnerable. A $2.2 million hole in our school budget will mean different things to every child, but it will mean less for all of them. I also want to emphasize that plugging that hole will not be able to be done through further economizing. The one criticism, or at least the loudest one, that has been aimed at this budget is that the school budget has grown less this year than the budget has in our other municipal departments. But what I think needs to be understood is that nearly all of our budget is wrapped up in salary, debt repayment, medical and retirement benefits, and other contractual requirements that we must pay. There's not a reserve or an extra bucket of money lying around that we can use to increase the school budget. We have slightly more money in our free cash this year than last, but still, it only amounts to 2.4% of our total budget, where the goal is 10%. Our insurance costs are up because of our aging infrastructure. And we are funding OPEC this year, but only just barely and far less than we used to. So the biggest concern to me is when we look for $2.2 million to plug the hole in our education budget next year, where will we find it? It is time for Braintree to do a serious assessment of what our priorities are and how we will fund them because either the money has to come from, because the money has to come from somewhere, or we have to make cuts, those cuts that I was describing. And it can't all be tax revenue because we'd be crushed. And it can't all be development either because then we'd be just crushed differently. We have to have an honest conversation about our, what our priorities are and how to chart a path forward that makes sense for our town because the services that we depend on are in jeopardy. Education is positioned to be hit first, but all of our departments will be hit if we don't do something to correct this direction. We can't just be the land of, no, no, I don't want more taxes. No, I don't want to see this development. No, I don't want to make that change. Because when we do that, the people who get left behind is us. So I'm going to support this budget this year. But those cautions are real. And I think Braintree would do very well to give serious attention to the master plan process that we are currently going through because I think if we approach that wisely with an open mind and a creative spirit, we can solve this problem. That's all.
Thank you very much, Councilor Flaherty. Any other counselors wish to speak? Councilor Maglio?
Thank you, Councilor Borkey. So this was the first budget process for me, as I mentioned frequently. And as someone new to Braintree's process, my goal was to learn as much as possible in order to understand the challenges that we're facing as a community and also to be as effective as I can be as a town counselor. So I have three takeaways that I learned through this process. One of them is that transparency is always worth striving for in order to build connections between residents and our local government. My second takeaway, town workers are highly skilled in stretching less dollars each year, even though needs are growing. That takes innovation and dedication, and I thank you. The third takeaway is to underscore what has been mentioned. And from my perspective, I used to wonder as I watched meetings and I watched on TV, I don't understand why people are talking about a problem with the budget. In the end, it always gets balanced, it always works, what's the problem? So being on the Ways and Means Committee, I learned, I learned a lot. And I was able to dig in. And as people have said, our expenses are rising at a rate that is faster than the way our revenue is coming in. So the way that I look at it is we have 12 months. The clock is already ticking. And we have that period of time to avoid absolutely devastating budget cuts that will impact every one of these talented town employees. It'll impact every department, every service, and therefore, every resident. And so I concur with every effort to see how we can build and rely on the talented staff that we have to help identify these new opportunities, as well as residents digging in and looking at some of the options that are before us and being open to compromise, negotiation, and flexibility. So I also support this budget completely.
Thank you, Councilor Maglio. Councilor Ringus?
Madam President, I will echo, I think, some of the comments that previous councillors have said here tonight. I do want to thank the mayor's office for their diligence in putting this together and obviously, the work that our department heads did in putting this together. Thank you to members of the school committee that are here. I served on the school committee, and I know the difficulty in going through the budget process and oftentimes, the frustration when sometimes you feel like there is a sort of predetermined amount that you are working with and you're doing everything in your power to give back to the children because that's what our school committee does. Thank you to our members of our Ways and Means, Councilor Maglio. Jumped right into the deep end of the pool to start your term. And from seeing some of these meetings, you jumped right in and you swam along just well. The Councilor Flaherty is serving on her second term as a member of the Ways and Means. Her questions were always thorough, engaged, and pointed. And so thank you for your work. The Chairman Reynolds, obviously, you bring a breadth of experience from your previous positions to this. So thank you to you as well for leading many hours of meetings over the month of May. When you watch these meetings or if you watch them on a yearly basis, a lot of times, you don't see the full council ask a lot of questions. And that, to me, is a sign that the Ways and Means did their job because a lot of the questions that many of us would have had have already been answered. So thank you to you folks for your work on that. And thank you for the department heads and the mayor's office for being there to have the answers to provide to them at that point so we can sort of hear from them ahead of time, digest them, and be ready to move forward at our annual town meeting. Obviously, I will be supportive of this budget tonight. And I think one thing that no one's noted yet tonight, too, is, because we will have emails, I'm sure, or we'll have complaints of, why didn't you raise the budget at the annual town meeting? And per our charter, the town council has only one thing that we can do at this meeting, which is either to vote the whole thing down or to cut money away. We have no ability under our charter to add money to it. So I think that's something to always keep in mind. But despite that, I will be supportive of this and would have been either way because I do think this is something that puts our priorities in order and addresses them in the best way possible, given our revenue streams and given the current economic outlook of the town. But I think as we move forward tonight, and I imagine from the comments thus far that we will be moving favorably on this budget tonight. I think it's important to celebrate what we, where we got to, that we are moving forward and that we have done so. But I think the next step in our budget process has to start tomorrow. I think Autumn McGoldrick kind of put it in the best way possible, and others have followed up with that. This is not going to have one solution. We do have a difficult budget years ahead of us. And it's not going to be from just new development. It's not just going to be from new taxes. It's not going to be just from creating new revenue streams. It has to come from all three of those things and perhaps other ways. And I think Councilor Maglio and her just comments just now kind of hit it on the head with transparency. And I think with transparency is also communication because I think we have to engage, all of us, the school committee, town department heads, the mayor's office, and especially office councillors, whether it be district or at large. We need to engage with residents. We need to push information out to residents because residents have to have that information available, knowing that there are going to be some very difficult decisions ahead in how we increase these revenues or how we get to where we need to be when these one time sort of revenue plugs dry up and we are looking at a school budget next year. So I think there's a lot of discussion to be had. There's a lot of information that needs to be pushed out. And I think we have to look very, very carefully at all of the ways we may be able to increase revenues for our town. So for tonight, thank you to everyone for the work they did. I will be recommending favorable action. But I do think that it's time for all of us now to do some really hard work, roll up our sleeves, and get to work on next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ringus. Any other counselors wish to speak?
Okay, I'd like to add and to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. And thank you all for your work and your words on the budget tonight. I think it's clear, we all know, the budget is complicated, and there are so many moving parts. I'm going to focus my remarks tonight, like some of my colleagues, on the biggest part of our budget, almost 50%, which I also believe is one of the most urgent. As a parent, a councillor, and a resident, and it needs to be addressed as alacrity, and that is the school budget. So when we were here last year, 10 school positions were eliminated due to budgetary shortfalls. Reading and writing classes were eliminated at the middle schools. We have been unable to fund additional behavioral health specialists, something we know all our kids need right now. And this year, rather than making even more cuts, we are plugging a $2.2 million financial hole with one time funding that won't be available again, as has already been said. And this includes using more than $1.2 million of our circuit breaker savings. Those are reserves that cover costs for our highest need students. After this year, that cushion will be gone. So we have one year to find at least $2.2 million through both cost savings and through new revenue sources, as has been discussed. Without this money, we are looking at losing between 20 and 30 teachers next year. And yet, the $2.2 million is just to keep what we have today. It doesn't restore the previous 10 positions that were lost. It doesn't bring back middle school reading and writing. It doesn't add mental health support. It doesn't provide for cost of living increases for our teachers, and it doesn't refill our circuit breaker savings. $2.2 million is the bare minimum of what we need to simply keep the system going as we know it today. So it's urgent, it's real, but it's not a cause for panic. This should, for all of our residents, be a call to action. What are we going to do about this? First, immediate action needs to be taken so schools can fund the $2.2 million deficit that will keep the system whole for next year. The school committee, under the leadership of Chairwoman Heger, is exploring ways to gain efficiencies that could save approximately $1 million a year. So that's nearly halfway to closing the gap. Please step up, get involved, say yes to solutions that we need to keep our school system strong. Next, we need to start working on our mid and long term planning that will bring in new revenue sources and build back our reserves. To echo our town auditor and my colleagues on the council tonight, one way our towns earn money is through new growth and redevelopment. That means welcoming new housing, new businesses, new industries, and new enterprises. These endeavors take thoughtfulness, creativity, vision, and fortitude, which is why the master planning process we are undertaking now is so critical to our future. Great ideas come from all of us, so please make sure you are part of the process. The next public meeting to discuss Braintree's master plan will be held on Thursday, June 23 at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. And finally, I'd like to say that we need to remember, we are all in this together. Hard decisions and compromises are going to have to be made. And that should not, and it must not, fall on any one department, neighborhood, or age group. We are a community, we have to sink or swim together. So tonight, I will be voting in full support of this budget. And in the months that follow, I am calling on all of us to please say yes to new ideas, yes to compromises, and yes to ensuring Braintree's future. So thank you again to the mayor and his staff for putting together the budget this evening. I'll go right ahead, Councilor Mackin, thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for jumping in last. Is it all right if I ask a question to Superintendent Lee?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, sorry, that's quite a fine.
Mr. Lee, and I'm sorry for not asking this in advance. I just kind of thought of it now with all the talk of education. I was under the impression over the last few years enrollment in Braintree schools has declined by at least hundreds of students. I don't know exact numbers, maybe you do, but is that, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Yes, since COVID, enrollment in the school system overall has declined by over 400 students.
Okay, now with COVID being over, is that a trend that you, in your opinion, is going to reverse? Or do you see it continuing or kind of level out? Or do you really not know?
Truly an unknown. My opinion would be some percentage of that group would return. How many, I do not know. The economy plays a large factor in that as some families have sent their kids off to private schools. If that economy leads them in a different direction, those kids could return. So it is an unknown, and I could offer a personal opinion, but it would probably be less than half in the short term. But over time, probably more.
And this was, did this trend start prior to COVID? Or was it strictly COVID that kind of kicked this off?
It's COVID that dramatically influences the number. If you look at 2020, we lost, going into 2021, about 250 kids. And then the following year, we lost close to another 200 kids. So it is truly COVID that was the driver. You know, enrollment in the district prior to that had been increasing in the upper levels, the middle and the high school levels, but declining in the elementary. COVID hit all levels almost equally.
In the elementary levels, I know the mayor touched on lower class size at the moment. That's where we were seeing the most overcrowding previously, correct?
Previously, yeah, far prior to COVID. You know, those numbers were such that the East project and the South project were really an answer to those overcrowding issues?
All right, no, that's, thank you very much. Those are my only questions. I do think it's kind of clear tonight, based on some of the comments from my colleagues, that education is going to be used in the future to push for additional housing in Braintree. So I just think we should keep an eye on those enrollment numbers and make sure that that's correct. That is it for me. I will be voting yes on the budget. I think the mayor did a great job.
Thank you, Councilor Mackin. All right, now I'd like to offer, if there's any members of the general public who would like to speak this evening, this is a public hearing, and you're more than welcome to join us. Come up to the podium and state your name and address. We'll give people a few minutes to decide. Okay, seeing none. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Ryan.
Thank you. So we have to read this before we close the public hearing. And that is the Town of Braintree FY '23 budget. Department programs, 111 Town Council Programs, FY '23 original, $268,212, and there is no revisions, no change, recommended change. 121 Mayor's Office Programs, FY '23 original, $481,344. There is no recommended change. 133 Finance Programs, $14,528,461. There is no recommended change. 151 Law, $173,430. There is no recommended change. 152 Human Resources Programs, $24,611,670. There is no recommended change. 161 Town Clerk, $512,337. There is no recommended change. 175 Planning and Community Programs, $578,808. There is no recommended change. 210 Police, $12,334,321. There is no recommended change. 220 Fire, $9,785,868. There is no recommended change. 241 Municipal Licenses and Inspections, $1,9398. There is no recommended change. 300 Education, $73,472,68. There is no recommended change. Blue Hills 350, $2,831,399. There is no recommended change. Department 400 Public Works, $9,621,431. There is no recommended change. 541 Elderly Affairs, $325,326. There is a recommended change. The new amount is $325,912.13. That's a change of $586. Library 610, $1,570,000. Library, six-ten, one million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and six, sixty-four dollars, uh, there is no recommended change. So the total general fund is one hundred and fifty-two million, one hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars was recommended. The new revised number is one hundred and fifty-two million, one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and six cents, and that's a change of five hundred and eighty-six dollars. For the four-hundred, the golf fund, one million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, no recommended change. Four-thirty-six sewer fund, eleven million, six, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars, no recommended change. Four-thirty-eight water, ten million, two hundred and sixty-seven, five hundred and forty-eight dollars, there is a recommended change. The new amount is ten million, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars, that's a change of a hundred and eighty thousand. Stormwater fund, one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars, there's no recommended change. Six-ninety cable access peg fund, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and three dollars, there is no recommended change. Total for all funds is one, one hundred and seventy-seven million, six, hundred and six, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and eight, fifty dollars. Uh, the revised amount is one hundred and seventy-seven million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and six cents, for a net change of one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. Uh, now we will read, each motion needs to be voted on separately, so is there a motion for order two-two-zero-two-five?
Yes, number one, that the Town of Braintree raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty-two million, one hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and the operation of the town's several department and programs for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, and that the several sums herein are set forth hereby approved for the several purposes that are subject to the source of funding for said expenditures, as outlined on the Exhibit A specifically, that the sum of eighty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars be transferred from golf course receipts, the sum of two hundred thousand be transferred from the overlay sewer cost account, the sum of nine thousand, seven hundred be transferred from the Waterways Improvement Fund, the sum of twenty-two thousand be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots, the sum of eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars be transferred from the water and sewer receipts, the sum of forty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars be transferred from the stormwater receipts, the sum of two million, eight hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars be transferred from the American Rescue Plan Act account, and the balance to be raised in the tax levy, which shall include two million, six hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the debt exclusion, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous.
Number two, that the Town of Braintree appropriate the sum of one million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's golf course and related programs for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, and that the several, several sums herein set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes, as outlined on the Exhibit A specifically, and that the sum of one million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars be raised in the golf course receipt, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Three, that the Town of Braintree appropriate the sum of twenty-two million, two hundred and nine thousand, thirty-eight dollars to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's water and sewer divisions and related programs for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, and that the sums herein set forth are hereby approved for several purposes, as outlined on the tax Exhibit A specifically, that the sum of one hundred and three thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars be transferred from the Water and Sewer Rehabilitation Fund, the balance of twenty-two million, one hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars be raised in the Water and Sewer Receipts, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Number four, the Town of Braintree appropriate the sum of one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and the operation of the town's stormwater division and related programs for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, and that several sums herein are set forth are hereby approved for several purposes, as outlined on Exhibit A, attached Exhibit A, specifically that the sum of one million, one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars be raised in the stormwater receipts, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Six, that the Town of Braintree appropriate the sum of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and three dollars to provide for all of the expenses for the maintenance and operation of the town's cable television, public education, and government access and related programs for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, that the several sums herein are set forth are hereby approved for the several purposes, as outlined on the tax Exhibit A specifically, that the sum of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and three dollars be raised in the cable franchise fees received, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Six, to see if the Town of Branch will accept the provisions of Chapter forty-four, fifty-three, F and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws establishing a tri-town regional water treatment plant fund as an enterprise fund effective for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Seven, pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one D, the town is authorized to incur a liability in excess of the amount appropriated for snow and ice for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. All right, we'll be moving on to our next item of business this evening, also a public hearing. FY, it's twenty-two-zero-two-six, Mayor, FY twenty-two-three budget, Community Preservation Committee, or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing, is there a motion to open the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, opening the public hearing, and I, with that, I will refer to the Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the committee on Ways and Means met over numerous, uh, nights during the month of May. Uh, and this item was presented by Director Santucci Rossi during her department review. Uh, the committee voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation for this motion.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would like to speak on this?
Thank you, Madam President, good evening, everybody. Um, as was mentioned, this comes to the full council with unanimous favorable recom- recommendation, followed by presentation from Director Santucci Rossi. And what this does is it allocates funds to categories that I think we have all become quite familiar with over the last year or two, uh, in order to be used for specific community preservation projects. Uh, and so each motion individually allocates funds to what we refer, often refer to as the buckets of categories for use of the funding, thank you.
Thank you, Chief of Staff, Tab. Is there any member of the council who would like to speak on this? Seeing none. Any members of the general public would like to speak? This is a public hearing, and you're welcome to come to the podium. Okay, seeing none. Um, I think the totals, if I added it up correctly, are over a million dollars this year for Community Preservation Act. So this is a really great source of funding for some of our important projects in town that might not otherwise get funding. So, um, this is, I think, another really great benefit of living in Braintree. This is an option for towns, and we have taken advantage of it. Okay, so seeing no one from the public and no councilors, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing has closed, and we will now move on to the vote. Is there a motion for order two-two-zero-two-six?
Yes, Madam President. C-one, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of two hundred thousand be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the community hosting reserve for acquisition, creation, preservation, or support of community housing or the rehabilitation or restoration of community housing that is required or created as provided by the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
C-two, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of two hundred thousand be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the open space reserve for the acquisition, creation, or preservation of open space or the rehabilitation or restoration of open space that is required or created as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
C-three, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of two hundred thousand be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the historic reservation, resource, excuse me, historic resources reserve for the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
C-four, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund to the Community Preservation Undesignated As, Undesignated As Provided Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, so moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
C-five, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, and the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, that the sum of fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three administrative operating fund as provided in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four B, Section five, said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and by the Director of Planning and Community Development.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, moving on to two-two-zero-two-seven, Mayor, FY twenty-two-three budget, continuation of revolving funds, or take up any action relative thereto. This is our third public hearing, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, with that, I would like to ask Chairman Reynolds for the recommendation of the Committee of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means, uh, met on this, uh, during the process of the operating budget overview this past month, and the Committee on Ways and Means voted unanimously in favor of this recommendation.
Thank you very much, Councilor Reynolds. Is there anyone from the mayor's office who would like to speak on the revolving funds?
Thank you, Madam President, as a way of reminder, this, uh, funds are unique to individual departments, and the spending is overseen by the corresponding department head with the, um, FY twenty-three proposed spending limit indicated in the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Chief of Staff, Tab. Are there any members of the council who would wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none. Any members of the general public who would like to speak on the revolving funds? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that closes the public hearing. Uh, we will now move on to the vote, is there a motion for order two-two-zero-two-seven?
Yes, Madam President. R-one, that in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, E and a half of the General Laws, the Town of Braintree hereby sets the maximum amount that may be spent during fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, for the revolving funds established by ordinance for certain departments, boards, committees, agen- agencies, or offices as follows. Revolving fund, elder ser- affairs services and activities, um, this is the department board, a committee, or agency, or officer, Department of Elderly Affairs, and the FY twenty-three spending limit is thirty thousand. Immunization, Board of Health, spending limit fifty thousand. Library materials, li- and library trustees, spending limit, limit forty-five thousand. Library room rentals, library trustees, five thousand. Recycling materials, mayor in conjunction with recycling coordinator, four thousand, eight hundred dollars. Household hazardous waste, mayor in conjunction with recycling coordinator, fifty thousand dollars. Full-day kindergarten, school committee, one million, fifty thousand dollars. Pro shop, mayor in accordance with director of golf operations, two hundred thousand dollars. Food and beverage, mayor in conjunction with director of golf operations, four hundred and fifty thousand. Water meter, mayor in conjunction with director of water operations, fifty thousand dollars, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. All right, thank you, uh, thank you very much to all the department heads for joining us this evening. Um, you're welcome to stay, that closes the budget motions, the official budget motions this evening. And we will be moving on to National Grid petitions, twenty-two-zero-two-two, for Sherbrooke Ave. and Robinson Ave., or take up any action relative thereto. I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Ryan, Chairman of the Committee on the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the Committee on the Department of Public Works met and recommended unanimously favorable action uh, for all of the petitions that we will be voting on tonight. So, the first one, two-two-zero-two, National Grid petition, Sher- Sherbrooke Ave. and Robinson Ave. Um, the motion is to relay approximately five hundred and sixty feet of one-inch bare steel from nineteen sixty with approximately three hundred and six, five hundred and sixty feet of two-inch plastic in Sherbrooke Ave. From Washington Street to number fifty Sherbrooke Ave. And approximately three hundred and ninety-five feet of one-and-a-half-inch bare steel from nineteen forty-one, approximately four hundred and fifty feet of two-inch plastic from nineteen seventy-five, with approximately eight hundred and forty-five feet of two-inch plastic in Robinson Avenue. From Washington Street to number sixty-eight Robinson Ave., with staff recommendations. Bells had no conflicts, uh, with this permit. The DPW has reviewed the subject petition and the accompanying sketch for the gas main replacement on Sherbrooke Avenue and Robinson Avenue. The work is being proposed to eliminate aging gas infrastructure. The sections of Sherbrooke Avenue and Robinson Avenue are not subject to the excavation moratorium. Sherbrooke Avenue was last resurfaced by total reconstruction in two thousand and twelve and is in excellent condition. Robinson Ave. was last resurfaced with the micro-surfacing in two thousand and eight and is in fair condition. The DPW recommends the following conditions for p- this petition, if it is to be granted. A temporary patch will be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw cut, backfilled, and compacted in eight-inch lifts, paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of four inches and two-inch lift to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patch throughout one winter, a permanent patch shall be placed in the following spring. The permanent repair on Sherbrooke Ave. shall be curb to crown, mill and overlay with a pavement depth of one-and-a-half inches. The permanent repair on Robinson Ave. shall be a one-and-a-half-inch grind and inlay patch encompassing the width of the original trench plus one foot on each side. If the permanent patch fit, falls within two feet of the roadway edge, that patch shall be extended completely, completely to the gutter. Uh, the DPW also recommends the following requirements be added to the permit. Uh, they must, National Grid should have a pre-construction meeting with DPW, and they're not allowed to close the street. That's up to the Town of Braintree, the standard language, so that's, um, the motion, so moved.
Thank you, Councilors. Um, I just wanted to offer if there were any councilors or if anyone from the mayor's office had any comments on the National Grid before we pick the vote. Okay, all right, with that, we have a motion in a second. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on to twenty-two-zero-two-three, National Grid petition, Elm Street to Railroad Street, or take up any action relative thereto.
So the motion is to relay approximately three hundred feet of six-inch bare steel from nineteen eleven with approximately three hundred feet of four-inch plastic in Elm Street from Washington Street to Railwa- Railroad Street, and approximately one hundred and eighty fin- feet of six-inch bare steel from nineteen eleven with a hundred and eighty feet of four-inch plastic in Railroad Street. From Elm Street to the end of the main with staff recommendations. This is from Bells, please note, Bells has a one hundred and fifteen thousand oil, volt, oil-filled transmission line located on River Washington Stores Ave. Bells Engineering should be notified in advance of any excavation to be performed in close proximity to this line. Bells will provide onsite support and safety personnel at no cost of the project. Bells also has a thirteen-eight volt underground system on Elm Street, and this is in concrete enc- encased duck bank to be identified through the dig-safe process. DPW's comments are, the DPW has reviewed the subject petition and the accompanying sketch for the gas main replacement on Elm Street and Railroad Street, and the work is being proposed to eliminate aging gas infrastructure. Prior to the DPW's resurfacing of Railroad Streets, which is currently planned for this year, Elm Street is also not subject to the excavation moratorium, having been last resurfaced in the year two thousand. Given the late nature of National Grid's request, the DPW recommends the following conditions for this permit, if it is to be granted. National Grid shall begin work as soon as possible following council approval so that the DPW's two thousand twenty-two resurfacing project on Railroad Street is not delayed. National Grid shall guarantee that all excavated trenches within the town's right-of-way are backfilled to attain a minimum of ninety-five percent compaction to ensure that the excavated areas will not settle once the roadway and sidewalks are resurfaced. Wh- should the newly paved roadway and/or sidewalks settle because of poorly compacted trenches, National Grid will be required to perform large-scale curb-to-curb repairs to fully mitigate any deficiencies. A temporary patch will be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw cut, backfilled, and compacted in eight-inch lifts, paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of four inches and- paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of four inches and two-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patch on Elm Street through one winter, a permanent patch shall be placed the following spring. The permanent patch shall be one-and-a-half-inch grind and inlay patch encompassing the width of the original trench plus one foot on each side. The permanent patch falls within two feet of the roadway, the patch shall be extended completely to the gutter. They also recommend they should have a pre-construction meeting with Braintree D P W. in the standard, they can't close the roadway, only the Town of Braintree, so so moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Moving on to twenty-two-zero-two-four, National Grid Petition, Cherry Street or take up any action relative thereto.
So the motion is to relay, relay approximately one hundred feet of one-and-a-half-inch bare steel from nineteen thirty-seven, approximately two hundred feet of two-inch coated steel from nineteen fifty-seven, with approximately three hundred feet of two-inch plastic in Cherry Street from Commons Street to the end of the main at number thirty-five Cherry Street with staff recommendations. Bells, there's no conflicts from Bells. The D P W. The D P W. has reviewed the subject petition and the accompanying sketch for the gas main replacement on Cherry Street. The work is being proposed to eliminate aging gas infrastructure. Cherry Street is not subject to excavation moratorium, having been last resurfaced by overlay in two thousand and eleven. However, however, the roadway is in excellent condition. Given the pavement condition and the narrow width of the existing roadway, the D P W. recommends the following conditions for this petition if it is to be granted. A temporary patch shall be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw cut, backfilled, and compacted in eight-inch lifts, paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of four inches and two-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patch through one winter, a permanent patch shall be placed in the following spring. The permanent patch shall be curb-to-crown, mill and overlay with the pavement depth of fifteen inches. The D P W. also recommends if the permit is to be granted, that they should have a pre-construction meeting in the same standard that they're not allowed to close the roadway, only Braintree is allowed to do that. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
I'm getting a little jealous that you keep thanking Counselor Ryan and Hume. I'm doing all the reading and she's just saying, she's just saying second over there.
That's for a special thank you to Counselor Ryan.
I'm, I'm, I'm being a little fresh.
All right. Twenty-two-zero-two-eight, National Grid Petition, West Street or take up any action relative thereto.
Motion to relay approximately two thousand three hundred feet of three-inch coated steel from nineteen fifty-one, nineteen fifty-four, and the twenty feet of three-inch plastic from nineteen eighty-seven, with approximately two thousand three hundred and twenty feet of six-inch plastic in West Street from Herbert. Relay approximately fifteen feet of two-inch plastic from nineteen eighty-seven, and approximately three hundred and ten feet of two-inch coated steel from nineteen fifty-one, with approximately three hundred and twenty-five feet of two-inch plastic in Oak Street from West Street to the end of the main. Relay minor amounts of old gas pipe in Mount Vernon Street, twenty-five feet, Tremont Street, thirty-five feet, and Hollingsworth Ave., seventy feet, to make connections to the new pipe on West Street. Relay approximately two hundred and fifty-five feet of two-inch coated steel with approximately two hundred and fifty-five feet of two-inch plastic in private way at number one sixty-two West Street to the end of the main with staff recommendations. Bells has no conflicts. The D P W. has reviewed the subject petition and the accompanying sketch for the gas main replacement on West Street and Oak Street. The work is being proposed to eliminate aging gas infrastructure. West Street and Oak Street are not subject to the excavation moratorium having been resurfaced by mill and overlay in two thousand and nine, by micro-surfacing in two thousand and fourteen, respectively. West Street is a collector road that carries a high volume of traffic, and the pavement is in great condition. As such, the D P W. recommends that the subject petition be granted with the following conditions. A temporary patch will be placed at all locations immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw cut, backfilled, and compacted in eight-inch lifts, paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of four inches and the two-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patches through one winter, permanent restoration shall be completed the following spring. The permanent restoration on West Street shall be curb-to-crown, mill and overlay with the pavement depth of one-and-a-half inches. The permanent restoration on Oak Street shall be an eight-foot-wide grind and inlay patch with the pavement depth of one-and-a-half inches. If the edge of the permanent pavement on Oak Street falls within two feet of the roadway gutter, the patch shall be extended completely to the roadway edge. National Grid or its paving contracts shall meet with the Engineering Division prior to the permanent restoration to agree on the work limits with regards to the other side of the street connections that are made. These conditions apply to all work within the public right-of-ways. National Grid must ensure that they, any necessary permissions required for excavation within the private way are sought prior to construction. They also recommend the following requirements be added to the permit if it is to be granted, and this is talking about the pre-construction meeting, and they're not allowed to close the roadways, only Braintree can do that. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Madam President, just want to take a moment, you know, after doing these four permits tonight, to really point out what an excellent job the D P W. staff are doing on these permits. You know, looking out for the Town of Braintree, working with National Grid to make sure that our infrastructure is being maintained and that our roadways, if they're in good condition, they're being put back in proper condition after these projects. So I want to commend the D P W. We've never seen better results now for these permits. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. All right, we are moving on now to two-two-zero-two-nine, Mayor, Request for Appropriations, C P A appropriation, Windjammer Cove Affordable Conversion Project Supplemental Funds Request or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. This public hearing will be opened and then continued. So is there a motion to open the public hearing for Order two-two-zero-two-nine?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. And now is there a motion to continue the public hearing for Order two-two-zero-two-nine to June seventh, two thousand twenty-two, at seven thirty P M.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda, twenty-two-zero-three-zero, Mayor, F Y twenty-two, Supplemental Appropriation Number One, or Take Up Any Action Relative There Too. This is also a public hearing. So is there a motion to open the public hearing for two-two-zero-three-zero?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is unanimous. The public hearing is now open, and I will refer to Chairman Reynolds, Chairman of the Committee of Ways and Means, for the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee on Ways and Means met early this evening and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council for Order twenty-two-zero-three-zero.
Thank you very much, Chairman Reynolds. Would anyone from the Mayor's Office like to speak? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to first ask for your support on this. And if you look at the fourteen motions, you will see the amount of effort, and I just want to commend my staff. Chief of Staff Nicole Tub, Ed Spelman, and all my department heads. I mean, this has been really how we've operated. Not only do we conservatively budget, but we also look at all of our spending throughout the year and try to find ways of reallocating funds if we can to cover those costs. And I remember for many years, you know, supplements would be two-point-four million, two-point-four million, two-point-six million. We have done everything we can to utilize the least amount of free cash. And I might note that if it wasn't for the major tragic incident in having our offices shot and a murder at the Soul Shore Plaza and a couple of other issues, we, we may not be looking at, we would not have been looking at any supplement at all coming from free cash. And the goal has been, as we funded our budget this year, to not have to come back and supplement. So I think that, you know, it's really a tribute to every one of my department heads, my chief of staff and Ed Spelman for working together and combing through this budget. And I just want to thank them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief of Staff Tub?
Thank you. So as was noted, the total supplement request is valued at two million, five hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and eighty-three cents, broken down in a variety of categories predominantly involving police and fire overtime, as well as snow and ice deficits and deficits related to the unanticipated rise in fuel costs. This is truly a town-wide collaborative effort. As you may recall, in the past, we started undertaking a process where before we utilized free cash to support supplemental funding requests, we reviewed every department's year-to-date expenditure, as well as previously authorized but unspent capital expenditures, down to the penny. You'll see there's one account that had one dollar in it that's being transferred to support a supplement, which is one dollar left. We have to utilize free cash in order to close out fiscal year twenty-two. And while I'm here, I want to just take a minute. I know some folks have left, but we had other town employees with us tonight. We still have Ben Hulk, Assistant Director of D P W. with us, Chris Griffin, Acting Director of Recreation, Mary Kenny, who handles the finances at the Police Department, also previously with us. We had Chris Trudell from Engineering, Lou Dutton, the Waterworks Superintendent, Darren Brown, Director of Golf Operations. We also were joined by Tom Devon of the School Committee, who I don't believe was recognized at the beginning of our meeting, and just want to echo the sentiments previously raised, but as they specifically relate to the supplemental and how hard everybody works combing through their budgets and really identifying funds that were needed to get to year-end, and funds that could be transferred to help support other departments as part of this fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Tub. Are there any counselors who would like to speak on this matter? Any members of the public would like to speak on this? Okay, I would like to commend the Mayor's Office and his staff, and Counselor Ryan is going to be really tired after reading all of these, and I think it speaks volumes for the amount of work that our town employees are doing to take as good care of our finances as possible. I would like to point out that just like in our own lives, there are unanticipated expenses that arise year after year, and so that is another reason why it is so important for us as a community to start thinking about how we're going to build back our reserves to pay for things that are understandably unanticipated. Police incidents, snow and ice removal, a terrible winter, gas prices rising. So again, we need to make sure we have our money in the reserves to pay for these services that are absolutely critical, not extra. So again, I would urge all residents in collaboration with the council and with our town offices to think through what we can do to help build back up our reserves in our community. Okay, with that, don't see anyone else wishing to speak. Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is closes the public hearing. And now is there a motion for Order two-two-zero-three-zero, and each of these will be voted on separately.
Yes, Madam President. Number one, Police Department, motion that the sum of fifty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars be transferred from the Finance Principal on Debt Program fifty, Principal on Debt Account. Forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-five cents be transferred from the Finance Interest on Debt Program fifty-two, Interest on Debt Account. Twelve thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars, forty-one cents be transferred from the Finance Interest on Debt Program fifty-two, be in Interest on Debt Account. Two hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars be transferred from the Human Resources Admin Program oh-one Workers' Compensation Account. Two hundred and fifteen thousand be transferred from the Human Resources Admin Program oh-one Workers' Compensation Account. One thousand be transferred from the Human Resources Admin Program oh-one Labor Relations Account. Two hundred and five hundred be transferred from the Human Resources Admin Program oh-one Consultant Account. Fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars be transferred from the Municipal License and Inspection Department Health Program oh-seven Public Nurse Account. One thousand be transferred from the Town Council Administration Program oh-one Dues and Membership Account. Eight thousand be transferred from the Finance Account Program oh-four Photocopy or Rental Account. One thousand, five hundred be transferred from Finance Account, Accounting Program oh-four Photocopy or Supplies Account. Ten dollars be transferred from the Finance General Insurance Program oh-nine Insurance Deductible Account. Five dollars be transferred from the Finance Treasury Program ten Postage Account. Five thousand be transferred from the Finance Treasury Program ten Printing Account. Five hundred and forty-eight dollars, forty-six cents be transferred from Finance Treasury Program ten Meeting Account. Twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars, fifty-eight cents be transferred from the Planning and Development Administration Program oh-one Assistant Director Account. Eight thousand be transferred from the Planning and Development Administration Program oh-one Administration Expense Account. Fifty dollars be transferred from the Planning and Development and Fair Housing Program eight Awards Account. One hundred be transferred from the Planning Development and Development Fair Housing Program oh-eight Printing Forms Account. Eight hundred be transferred from Planning and Development Fair Housing Program oh-eight Committee Expense Account. Fifty dollars be transferred from Planning Development Historic Commission Program oh-nine Postage Account. Six hundred be transferred from the Planning Development Historic Commission Program oh-nine Dues and Membership Account. Hundred thousand be transferred from the Sale of Town Land Account and two hundred ninety-three, no, two hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred be transferred from the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Certified Free Cash for a total of one million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, ninety-eight dollars be transferred to the Police Department Overtime Account. Further, the Director of the Municipal Finance be authorized to allocate said sums to and among various line items effectively affected hereby. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Number two.
Two, Police Department, motion the sum of forty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars be transferred from the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Certified Free Cash to the Police Department Patrol Bureau Program oh-four sworn Personnel Council. Moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Three, motion the sum of eighty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars be transferred from fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Certified Free Cash to the following accounts: twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven to the Police Department Equipment Maintenance Program oh-three Outside N V. Repairs. Four thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, four thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars be to the Police Department Equipment Maintenance Program oh-three Tires and Tubes Account. Forty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine to the Police Department Equipment Maintenance Program oh-three Gasoline Account. And five, two, three thousand, five hundred and six dollars for Police Department Building Maintenance Program. Oh-two Equipment Maintenance Council. Moved.
Second.
Thank you, Counselors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Four, Fire Department, motion the sum of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and fourteen be transferred from the Finance Department Administration Program oh-one nine C Reserve Account. Hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and eight cents be transferred from the Library Department Current Topics Program oh-five Librarians Account. Ten thousand be transferred from the Human Resources Department Administrative Program oh-one Unemployment Account. Fifty thousand be transferred from the Human Resources Department Administration Program oh-one Retirement Sick Leave Account. Seventy-five thousand be transferred from the Human Resource Department Veterans Benefits Program oh-six Veterans Benefits Account. Two hundred be transferred from the Human Resource Department Administration Program oh-one Meetings Account. One thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars be transferred from the Planning Development Administration Program oh-one Assistant Director Account. Five thousand, five hundred be transferred from the Planning Development Administration Program oh-one Administration Account. Three thousand be transferred from the Town Clerk Administration Program oh-one Technology Account. Administration Account. Twenty thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents be transferred from the Town Clerk Elections Programs oh-two Part-Time Employees Account. Six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents be transferred from the Police Capital Program oh-two F Y nineteen Evidence Containment Area Account. Ten thousand be transferred from the Elder Affairs Capital Program. Zero-two-five-four-one-one-nine-zero-six F Y nineteen COA Roof Repairs Account. Twelve thousand be transferred from the Elder Affairs Capital Program. Zero-two-five-four-one-one-nine-zero-six F Y nineteen COA Boiler Repairs Account. Ninety dollars and thirty-nine cents be transferred from the D P W. Capital Program oh-zero-four-zero-zero Inspection Drainage Account. One dollar be transferred from the Police Department Capital Programs two-two-one-zero-one-nine-zero-six F Y nineteen Police Tases Account. One dollar and ninety-five cents be transferred from the Police Capital Program two-two-one-zero-one-nine-zero-six FY nineteen Police Portable Radio Account. And two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars and ninety-three cents be transferred from the Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-four-one Certified Free Cash for a total of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars be transferred to the Fire Department Overtime Account and further that the Director of Municipal Finance be authorized to allocate said sums to and among various line items affected thereby. So moved.
Second. Thank you, Councilors Ryan and Hume. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Department of Public Works, number five, motion the sum of twenty-five thousand be transferred from the DPW Recreation Community Events Program fifteen Department Head Account and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars from the DPW Recycling Program twenty-one Recycling Process Account for a total of fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars be transferred to the DPW Equipment Maintenance Program oh-three Outside Motor Vehicle Repairs. Council moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Six, Public Works Department, motion the sum of seven thousand be transferred from Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-one Certified Free Cash to the DPW Equipment Maintenance Program zero-three Diesel Account. So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Seven, Public Works Department, motion the sum of seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars from the DPW Recycling Program twenty-one Recycling Processing Account. Six hun- six thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars be transferred from Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-one Certified Free Cash for a total of eighty thousand to the DPW Equipment Maintenance Program oh-three Gas Account. So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Eight, Public Works Department, motion the sum of nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents be transferred from the Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-one Certified Free Cash to the DPW Branffree Waymouth Recreational District Program twenty-one Branffree Waymouth Recreational Assistant Account Assessment Account. So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Nine, Public Works Department, motion the sum of three hundred and five thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and fourteen cents be transferred from the Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-five Certified Free Cash to the DPW Snow and Ice Program eleven Contract Services Account.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Um, ten, Police Department, motion the sum of twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars be transferred from the Police Administration Program oh-one cer- sworn Personnel Account. Twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four be transferred from the Police Administration Program oh-one Education Account. Four thousand, one hundred and forty-three be transferred from Police Administration Program oh-one Holiday Account. Sixty-six dollars be transferred from the Police Administration Program oh-one Accredi- Accreditation Account. Two thousand be transferred from Police Administration Program oh-one Investigation Funds Account for a total of forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars be transferred to the Police Patrol Bureau Program oh-four sworn Personnel Account.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Eleven, Police Department, motion the sum of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars be transferred from the Police Special Services Program oh-eight sworn Personnel Account. Sixteen thousand, six hundred and ten be transferred from Police Department Special Services Program oh-eight Educ- Education Account. Twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight be transferred from Police Department Special Service Program oh-eight Overtime Account. Two thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars be transferred from the Police Special Service Program oh-eight Shift Differential Account for a total of eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixteen to be transferred to Police Department Police Patrol Bureau Program oh-four sworn Personnel Account.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Twelve, Police Department, the sum of five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars be transferred from Police Detective Bureau Program oh-six sworn Personnel Account to be transferred to the Police Patrol Bureau Program oh-four sworn Personnel Account.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.[1630.54]